We get 30 inches on what chairs it would be. So we're gonna come up with a plan, show it to you, get your comments on it, and go forward.
My second question is improving the sense of approval as you're driving into the glade.
Near arrival.
Arrival.
Right.
And the signage coming in. And again, I talked to you personally regarding putting together a petition to the powers-to-be, the county, for the signs that we have coming in here. We probably have the most signs, it's an ungodly sight as you're driving into the Fairfield Glade, that why don't we now, when the road's coming in and all those signs have to be taken down, most of them, that the glade takes a positive position and puts together a petition, whether it's the county or the state, to put the zoning in to eliminate majority of those signs that are under there. They're eyesore.
Have you gone down an antenna road lately? It's not a trick question. We did just did the five lanes there, and they're taking the signs and putting them way back, so it looks a whole lot better than it ever looked before. That's one part of it. Two is, we do ask our old representatives, and we do ask the county to do something about it, the longer the shorter it is. It's up to the county, it's a state ordinance, they can have it, the people get paid to have it on here, they need the money. Now, and it's gonna be five lanes, they'll be further back, but Fairfield Glade itself is not a municipality, it's not a governing agency, it's a club, and we do not have the authority to do it. We can write letters, we can talk to people about it, which we do, but that's the extent of what we can do. Actually, if you wanna help out there, if you personally wrote letters or emails, you'd get a lot more attention from the elected officials than you would from Fairfield Glade. Just Fairfield Glade writing one.
Again, if we took a positive approach and as a unity, as Fairfield Glade, and you have seventy-some thousand or names on that and take it, it's better than one person writing a letter and/or an email. One person can't change the world.
Yeah, but a bunch of people can.
Sure, and that's why I say let's do it.
If Fairfield Glade sends something and you get a bunch of members to do the same thing, that has a lot more power to it.
I think as Bob mentioned, Zima, if you look at the stretch from the interstate to Arctown Road, it is five lanes already. There's the signage, you don't notice as much because, number one, with five lanes, it's way off to the side. I know the state has indicated that a lot of these signs are in their right-of-way, we have signs in their right-of-way, that they're gonna force us to take out of the right-of-way. So I think as Peavine Road is widening, a lot of that is gonna go away, and it's gonna, the look is gonna change dramatically.
Still, we don't have the zoning cut to... What I'm saying is, we need to get the zoning correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is working. Is it working?
I don't think so, unless you're not close enough.
Everybody hear me, 'cause I have a loud voice.
Who are you, Rob?
Cheerleading, you know?
What would be your question?
What I would like to ask is, you keep basing everything on the membership. On the survey, if everyone doesn't know this, there was only approximately seventeen-hundred people that responded to the survey. So we're gonna base everything off of these seventeen-hundred people, which maybe two of them came from the same household. Does not mean that they addressed it the same way, but that is such a low amount of people in this community that did this survey. So what does the people really, really want? Do we want what we want, or do we wanna base it on a few people? And if you looked at the survey, a lot of these people were only here for two years. You people have been here a lot longer than that. What do you really want? I am not saying that things should not be done in this community to update, but look at the figures and study your thing, and it's a lot of money. And if you don't think that your dues and maintenance fees are not gonna go up in within the next ten years, you're gonna be in for a rude awakening, 'cause this stuff is gonna cost a lot more money. It's up to you. It's your community.
Well, thank you very much, but there was no question.
Now, I will address the survey. I think most professionals that have done surveys and what have you, we have about seven thousand residents here. So we received eighteen hundred, seventeen hundred, I think, surveys. Statistically, that is valid sample to give you a good sense of what the seven thousand population we want. So that's the first thing. Secondly, though, we're not basing everything just on that survey. The board and management have looked at other things, return on investment, the ability to attract new people, et cetera. And so we think overall, we've put together a package that does work for the long term and takes into account all those various constituencies. Now, with respect to people who have been here less than two years, when you think about, from a prospect standpoint, and we are trying to attract more people, those are the people that are closer to...
They cut the budget, that's what it is. I mean, when we looked at it, and I don't wanna belabor, when we looked at this, we looked at what had to be done according to operating and chambers, what repairs had to be made, whether or not we should repair it or replace it. We looked at how many dollars are we gonna spend, what was acceptable, what made sense. We took the ten years, not to down to five, took the four years after 2013, put them out for you to look at, and they will be discussed and probably changed over the next couple of years. But it's a plan, okay? 2013 is probably what we're gonna do. 14 through 17 are saying, this is what we wanna do, and this is how we think the place should look, but it's subject to input from other people, and actually, it is based on input from a lot of people. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Am I next?
I think. Since your technique wasn't a question from the last time on this side.
First of all, I wanna comment that I don't think it was a good survey. That's... It can't, it's not working.
Yes, it is.
First of all, I wanna comment since she did, that I didn't think it was a good survey. But that's my personal opinion. Secondly, you're showing on the budget increased costs for sewer. I'm wondering how much of our sewer system is accommodating the new structures that are going up? Food City, I know, is part of our sewer system. What else is there, and are they paying their fair share?
Yes, Food City's paying commercial rates, and they pay for the installation of it, and they're on a maintenance contract with us. The new places that are going up will also pay for grinder pump installations for the sewer line, and they'll pay commercial rates. So yes, they do. Right. Yes. All right, Jim.
Hi, Jim Mansfield, and my question really is about this budget and cost reductions or cost savings that may have been made over the last couple of months. Recently, Bob Webber and Tommy Lee decided to fire the tennis manager that we've had for many years, replaced that on kind of a part-time basis. We had a meeting of concerned tennis and pickleball members, and we were told that it was done for cost reduction measures, and that the two of them had done it without any consultation with the board, with the tennis community, with the tennis committee, or whatever. We asked, why were we being picked on, and why was that done? And they said, cost cutting, and other recommendations are going to be made to the board to reduce expenses. I'd like to know what recommendations have been made to reduce expenses with regard to all these expenditures, and which ones have you adopted?
I mean, there's too many of them. I mean, we went through meeting after meeting of this. I mean, to address the tennis one, the board doesn't get involved in the day-to-day operations of the management, okay? If the management decides, we pay them well, it's good management to make decisions on how to run it, then they make those decisions. Okay? Boards in the past have been accused of micromanaging this place, and I think it's happened a lot. Now you're asking us to go back and do that, and I don't think it's the board's job. So we don't do that. Okay, Jim? That's on the tennis side. On the expense side, there's a lot of things we've looked at to cut back on expenses, and one of the things that we did, and we get, not all we do is fine, and we get flack either way. We decided that the Legends Restaurant was losing too much people, people were annoyed with that. We cut back the hours. The first thing we got was flack, that we cut back the hours, and this was a remedy that everybody wanted, and we were heartless in doing that. So even though we do it, we get into trouble with it, Jim.
I think the tennis manager position, which has been here for at least eleven years that I know of, is not an insignificant thing, and would've been a great idea, if not the proper procedure as you see it, to get involvement from people that are affected by it. That's one. Two, have any other positions been eliminated in the 2013 budget to save money?
Nothing I can think of offhand.
No, no. Microphone's working now.
Okay.
Can I have a... In general, based on my experience and looking at the budgets now for two years, we run a pretty lean ship here. And as I go through the budget process, as I'm working with all the senior managers, you know, we're constantly looking at ways that we can improve while cutting costs, and that was one of the things that we determined. After being here over a year, we said, this is a position that we don't think we need for the long-term health of this club. And we'll continually look at every department, but overall, as I look at the other departments, we're pretty lean.
Your side.
Hello, my name is Dennis Lemansky, and I was just wondering if we're gonna continually give freebies away.
I'll get you.
Freebies as such as we stock the lakes, do things to the lakes, people from the outside use the lakes. As far as our employees, we have full-time and part-time employees. Is it true that they get free golf?
Yes, depending on the level, whether it's a part-time or full-time employee and the level of it, they get free golf. So does our voluntary fire department.
What you're looking at, as I don't work here, I mean, you know, I live here, but I don't have a job here, and if a person would golf once a week at, say, Dorchester at thirty-eight dollars, in seven months, he comes up to one thousand sixty-four dollars, which he doesn't pay a maintenance if you swap it out. I do. I don't think that's fair.
Yeah, but they start out with...
Yeah, but wait a minute now, if you have minimum wage, and if you don't like working at minimum wage, get a job somewhere else.
Hey, I feel...
We find that we attract people and we keep them over the years, and it's a benefit, as a soft dollars to the club. I mean, if those people weren't working here, they probably wouldn't pay golf, they would not pay...
Well, I can see a discount. You know, ten, twenty percent discount, but not free.
That is, that is the standard in the industry. Most, any club you go to, their employees get free golf. I think we have one gentleman over here in the dark that we haven't seen yesterday.
That's all right. I'm Keith Curz. Couple of comments. One, last year, I noticed that the budget went up on expenses much greater than the revenues did. This year, I think it's appropriate to note that expenses actually went down by about three and a half percent for the budget for next year, as opposed to the budget for this year, while revenues went up almost two percent. So I think that's a positive trend overall that everybody needs to keep in mind. My other real comment was, and Bob, if you could go back to the Upland deferred maintenance slide a second, because I missed one of the numbers. I think you said that they had identified about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of...
That's correct.
... maintenance that needed to be done, but you're telling us that you're only gonna address about a third of that number...
Right.
... and actually put more money someplace else. Why?
Well, we looked at everything that was on the report, it was a combination thing. Some of that, we actually did in 2012, okay?
Okay, so we don't see that.
You don't see that. So, Simon, not a lot, but some was done in 2012. Additionally, some of the items, like for example here, eighty thousand dollars for a new HVAC system for the pool area. That we need to analyze more and get in system details, we'll do that in 2013, we've got that plugged in in 2014. The other thing is, some of them are like Dorchester Clubhouse. Well, we don't wanna go in and do a lot of expenses or repairs in Dorchester Clubhouse and turn around, you know, one to two years later and tear it down. So that's why we've got only about three hundred sixty thousand this year, some done in 2012, some will be done in 2014, just for normal deferred maintenance, fifteen as well, some will be done as a result of new buildings or renovated buildings, so that's why.
I guess I'm still a little bit confused as to the disproportionate amount of the other column. If there's specific things which were identified by somebody, we paid to look at that and make recommendations to do it, why are we spending more money elsewhere and not addressing those issues?
Well, keep in mind, Dorchester Clubhouse... That's a good question, yeah. Keep in mind, they only looked at amenity buildings. They did not look at any of the other buildings, and in fact, we're engaging them to look at the other buildings. So really, those other dollars and those other buildings that are things that we've noticed for a number of years, actually, that really need to be taken care of. And so internally, we looked at all this and said, what really needs to be done in 2013 versus what can be deferred to 14 or 15, both Upland Design Report as well as our internal report, and that's how we came up with these numbers. So it's really a professional team saying, what makes sense, what's more critical doing 13 versus 14, Upland versus other stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Tom Roberts. I wonder if you could put the last slide up that showed the five-year... Yeah. Each year, you show an excess revenue... I'm sorry, can you hear me? I say each year, you show an excess revenue and available, amount of available capital, and carrying a debt through every year, holding it basically the same. And you mentioned in 2016, when you reach four million dollars, we have to do something different with our debt. It looks to me like we're just carrying a debt. At some time, we have to pay the fiddler. What's a long-range plan to have a debt reduction, looking at all of the improvements that you have? It just seems like with all of the emphasis on the fiscal cliff that we're looking at, I see a fiscal cliff here sometime. You just can't hold it.
One of the things you don't see, just maybe go out far enough, is the wastewater treatment plant, which we've been carrying debt, where the fund paid off is twenty years. So in the year 2019...
Nineteen.
Five hundred thousand dollars a year of debt goes away because the wastewater treatment plant will finally be paid off. And part of the huge debt that we've been carrying that stops us from doing anything is the twenty-year debt we incurred on the wastewater treatment plant. So this number, if nothing else happened, lets one-eight drop down to one-three, okay? And the other thing that we haven't had stunk clear on here, but when you look at the normal capital reserve funding of two million five hundred thousand dollars a year, this is the first time since I've been here in six years, okay, that we actually are building a reserve. We've always been taking things out of cash balances and borrowing money. What we're saying now is, in that two million five, in the years 2015, sixteen, seventeen, we will be building up a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year in a reserve, and we could do a number of things with it. We could either use it as capital, as we show it here, or we could pay down debt, or we could just build up our cash balances. We chose to just show a conservative approach to say that we're putting it out there. One of the problems we've had, and one of the reasons we're doing this maintenance and having these large numbers, is we haven't done the deferred maintenance over a number of years, and now we're catching up on it. That at some point, it goes down and we get back to normality. So there is an end to, there's a five hundred thousand dollar nut that comes back in two more years after this.
And I guess the only other question is, you're carrying an excess revenue... The other question is, carrying an excess revenue every year of almost four million dollars? I don't know. In my own household, you know, cash sitting around isn't making any money. Why do we carry that higher?
Well, that's, that excess revenue is before we service our debt of one million eight, and before we do our capital spending.
So...
It's prior to, it comes from operations...
Right.
... but it's prior to servicing our existing debt and doing our capital improvements.
So then the amount of available capital is what's, you're looking at staying basically the same?
These numbers right here, after debt...
Yeah. Right.
Typically, over a year, you're probably gonna have over two million dollars in capital expenditures, and then we also wanna do some reserve funding, so that's why we've got...
On one of the other slides, you showed borrowing, I think, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars so you could maintain that excess.
Right.
So the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars you're paying interest on...
Right.
... so you can have more excess? I don't know. I don't wanna get into your accounting, but...
It's a good question. You like carrying two million five hundred thousand dollars in cash, and you could spend five hundred thousand dollars and reduce your debt. I mean, and it's another way of looking at it. This is a conservative approach that says, we'd like to keep cash at two million five in case of emergency, in case of problems. But we could. We could turn it around in the next year, six months from now, and say, let's spend the five hundred thousand dollars, get everybody's comfortable with two million dollars in cash, and we'll go that way. And that reduces the debt. Yes, that's, but you know, one of the things that I'm fearful of, and one of the reasons I carry it high is, for those of you who were here when Dartmoor had the leak in the pipe, that cost us eight hundred thousand dollars. That was unexpected, and just eight hundred thousand dollars for that, okay? I'm worried about something like that happening. I like the position, I'm conservatively, financially conservative, I like having the money, so in case there's an emergency, we have it. But yeah, I can see it going down five hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Does that answer it?
Well, yeah. I assume, though, if you had an emergency, you could borrow the money at that time.
Probably. Probably depends on the emergency is, and right now, we have a nice rate of three point nine five. Our loans are at six point seven five, which we can't get out of. So timing, too, when the emergency comes and what the interest rates are, plays a factor. Yes?
My question follows on his, is I understand the board is conservative, and rather than leaving a low balance, you borrow money and then call it cash. Why not just maintain available funds in your line of credit rather than the comfort of having something in your checking account? I mean, it's the same money.
Right, we could do that. We could bring down, like I said, bring it down five hundred thousand dollars, pay off five hundred thousand dollars of the line, and not take as much on the line of credit and reduce our cash balance.
Well, you'd be reducing your debt service as well, though probably not...
Right, the debt service would come down, and the cash balance would come down.
And the reasoning behind that is just a comfort level of the board?
It's a comfort level of how much money the board needs to operate and interface potential emergency.
Is there any reason why that line of credit would not be available for an emergency, regardless of what it is?
No, it's fixed for five years.
So...
It would be...
So you're choosing to spend more money by borrowing just to have the cash on hand?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that comes up in the boat, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
All right. I know this hasn't been addressed, and I'm not sure it's in your purview, but I'm wondering if it's totally up to the state to determine what happens with the traffic flow around the glade, particularly on Peavine Road, where it's now nigh on to impossible to get out sometimes if you're on St. George's Drive?
Well, that's up to the state.
So we don't have any input as to where a traffic light would go, or whether it's gonna be a jug handle, or any of those sorts of things?
Sure, we could write a letter or call somebody and do something. If you have a particular recommendation, let us know.
Do something at St. George's.
That's it?
No.
Let's go forward then.
Either a jug handle or a light, because particularly with the, how shall I say it, demographic of this population, sometimes it is painful to sit there and wait to go into town.
Okay. Is there any, is there a light coming in here and they're playing? What? Tim has more, Tim Martin has more information.
Once again, Tim Martin, Community Services. You know, good comment. I know we got a lot of problems with traffic trying to get out on the existing roadway. When the new improvements come in, however, there will be a center turning lane that when you cross the two lanes to get to, if you're going westbound, you will be able to at least seek salvage in that turn lane and get across. Right now, you can't do that. You gotta wait for both, both sides of the...
People are too timid.
Right. The other issue, too, is that there's already a light at Food City, and I know based on my past experience of traffic signals, those two intersections, Lakeview and St. George's, are too close without a traffic light, and the state's not gonna allow a signal going that close. So we are pushing them very heavily, and I think we've gotten positive comments about putting a light up at the freeway here at Stonehenge, but beyond that, I don't see, I don't think you're gonna see no light elsewhere, so...
Is there any way to align?
Property's already been plotted, there's no, from the south side, there's no way to get a road, a new road connection to Food City, a parallel road. We can discuss this later, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, with the new design by DOT, there is a salvage there, I think. I know people are timid about pulling out, but the fact that you'll have a lane, that you can see refuge before you actually merge into traffic, that's gonna be a huge improvement over what you have now.
Yes?
Yes, my name is Nick Newcomino. This question is for Bob. In the survey, we voted very heavily to increase or go back to the fish fry. My understanding is, whenever you do all these re-does and make it acceptable to the state, the prices are gonna go up significantly. Am I correct?
No. We price all of our food and beverage events based on what the market will bear, and given our cost and what have you. So the cost of those improvements to the St. George Pavilion are not factored in. It's really our operating cost that determine, and what the market will bear, that will determine what the pricing will be. As we look at the fish fry, though, we wanna keep it simple. You know, and I've heard in the past that they went from fish to chicken and all this other stuff. We're talking fish fry, not a chicken fry.
Because if the survey was based on million dollars, which is what we paid in the past, we brought in beer and wine, and it was really a picnic.
Right.
Everybody loved it.
Yeah.
If this changed into a restaurant, with servers and everything, okay?
No, this was designed to be, the goal is to be similar to what you have previously, excluding chicken. Keep it simple.
Yes.
Not sure this lady here's question was really answered, about borrowing the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or a half a million, to keep two million dollars cash on hand. When she was talking about that, I seen a lot of people squirming in their chairs. I was wondering, you might wanna do is take a show of hands, how many people would think we should be borrowing money when we have excess, two million, two point two million, and maybe you could adjust your budget to take that half a million dollars out of there.
Yeah, I'm probably, you're looking at the guy who fought hardest to pick at two five, so blame it all on me, okay? Most of the other board members and management thought two million was fine. I thought, to run this club, and based on problems we've had in the past, I was comfortable with two point five. If it's gonna be two million, that's fine. If the membership is comfortable with two million, that's fine with me.
You keep saying that's fine, but let's see a show of hands, how many people think you should have that half a million, we should not borrow it? Yeah, you said you had, you had the capability of still borrowing money guaranteed for five years, let's take it out, let's take it out of the budget as a line item, line of credit.
Keep in mind, too, just because that four ninety's in the budget or in this presentation doesn't mean we have to borrow it. So no different than expenses that are in the budget, doesn't mean we have to spend them, same thing. So the... Same thing. So the board will be looking at this with management as we go down this path and figure out what makes most sense at that point in time. So this is kind of a worst-case scenario, if you will. Doesn't mean we're going to actually borrow that amount of money.
Okay.